All right.
Hello.
Let's call this meeting of the Warminster Township Board of Supervisors to order Thursday, March 4th, 2021. I'd like to have the Pledge of Allegiance. I'll start. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, I'd like to have a moment of silence for all our brave servicemen and everyone else serving our country here and abroad, and also to include all our lost loved ones who have fallen to the COVID virus. Okay, thank you very much. For announcements, I would just like to say that the board had an executive session today before the meeting. We discussed contracts with our police and some other land use issues.
Yeah, and litigate and also litigation matters.
Yes, correct, litigation matters. Excuse me. That's the only announcements I have. I'll go to Kathy.
No announcements tonight, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Mark?
Few. Once again, unfortunately, I have to send some condolences out. We lost our former state senator Stuart Greenleaf recently. Stu was a long-term member of the state senate and was a heck of a nice guy. So condolences there. And unfortunately, we lost another member from Public Works as well. Jeff Dupree passed away back in January. Jeff was a long-term employee and really fought a courageous battle with cancer. The man really fought a courageous battle. So he's hopefully, him and his family will be in our prayers as well. And on that note, too, I want to mention that March is colon cancer awareness month. I might pink on for that, as you all know, on the fortunate survivor of colon cancer. So I just encourage everyone to please get your screenings. Or if you're having symptoms, don't hesitate, go to the doctor. And that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman, a fact not to make people know about, Senator Greenleaf played basketball at the University of Pennsylvania.
That's what I didn't know.
It was, he doesn't like to, he didn't like to admit when he played there because he looked so good, but he played on some pretty good teams there.
All right, who would like to go next? Mary?
Good evening, everyone. I have some Parks and Recs announcements. The Spring Slush Road Rally registration is open for Spring Slush Road Rally on Saturday, March 20th, starting at 9:00 a.m. You must pre-register at wwwwarminstertownship.org. Backsplash special events. The fee is $25 per car. The grant construction is underway. The grant construction at Warminster Community Park is underway. And many sections of the park have been closed for safety. The perimeter trail, pond trail, pavilion, playground, and dog park will remain open, though access may change. The basketball court, Safety Town soccer field, soccer parking area, crossover trails, and most of the runway are closed. For more information or to see a map on the grant project, stop by the Parks and Recs office at Warminster Community Park or call 215-443-5428. Dog licenses in Bark Park, 2021 annual dog licenses can be purchased at the Parks and Recs office Monday to Friday from 9:00 a.m. through 4:00 p.m. Pennsylvania law requires that all dogs over the age of three months must be licensed and have a rabies vaccination. 2021 Bark Park memberships are available. Virtual Bark Park orientation classes are held the third Wednesday of every month. Please call Parks and Recs to be placed on the class list. The virtual snow sculpture contest, which is free, it's running January 1st to March 31st, 2021. It's not too late to send in your best snow sculpture pictures to recreation@warminsterpa.org. Winners will be chosen in late March and will be posted on the website. Upcoming new programs, check out the township website for all the new programs that we are offering this spring and summer. Ballroom dance, fencing, archery, virtual astronomy, children's crafts, and a birdwalk. wwwwarminstertownship.org backsplash special events. And some summer camp programs have been posted. To Friends of Warminster Parks fundraising for a bank shot basketball, after receiving a generous legacy gift, Friends are fundraising to complete the intergenerational all-inclusive bank shot basketball program. For information or to donate, please go to www friendsofwarminsterparks.org. The Hometown Hero banners are still available. Friends of Warminster Parks continue to offer the Hometown Hero Banner Program honoring our local veterans. Banners are displayed along Veterans Way and Warminster Community Park from April through December. For an application or more information, please visit www friendsofwarminsterparks.org or stop by the Parks and Recs office. Park reminders, parks are open from sunrise to sunset. After dusk, you must have a permit or risk being fined. Park restrooms and Bark Park water are closed for the season and will reopen around April 1st, when the threat of frost has passed. During the winter weather, trails may be snow-covered, have icy patches, or be the last thing to be plowed as roads and sidewalks take precedence. Please be sure to exercise caution when using these park trails. Please do not feed the wildlife, especially the fox, the deer, the geese in the parks. Supplemental feeding encourages wildlife to lose their fear of people and become dependent on handouts that are not part of their natural diets. For more information on our programs or to register, please contact Parks and Recs office again at 215-443-5428, or visit the township website again at wwwwarminstertownship.org. Backsplash special events. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Mary. And last but not least, Judy. You're on mute.
Ben Wilson Center is still offering free $2 lunches. You can get five lunches, meals for $10. You have to call in advance and pick them up on Monday mornings. They are not fully open yet, but you can check out their website. They have some fabulous virtual programs going on. So I suggest that you check their website and see how you can join in. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Judy. There are no presentations tonight, I do not believe, so we'll go right to land use matters. One on the agenda is the Verizon Cable Franchise Renewal Agreement. Leave that to you, Bill.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The board has before tonight an ordinance adopting a new five-year cable franchise agreement with Verizon. As I understand, that it was a tough negotiations. I think we all know that the nature of the cable television has changed with the likes of Netflix and Hulu and YouTube. And it was interesting that Verizon, normally the cable TV franchisees seek 10-year contracts at a minimum, and they were only looking for a five-year. We did, they will continue to pay us the 5% of the cable operators' gross revenue. And we've tried to expand the definition of gross revenue, including 22 different revenue sources, but I'm afraid that the future is not bright in terms of cable franchise fees with the competition that's coming. But at any rate, the board has the new five-year franchise agreement before it, and the administration would recommend the adoption of the ordinance approving the new franchise agreement.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Is there a motion to adopt the Verizon Cable Franchise Renewal Agreement?
A motion.
Second? A second, Chairman. Okay, any questions or comments? I have none myself. This is going to be, we know that this revenue stream is going to be diminishing over time, so something we're going to have to address in the future. But we have five years, and that's about it. Is there any public comment?
There's nothing in the email, and there's no one in the room for this matter.
Okay. All right, so being no more public comment or any other comments, we'll call a question. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Chair votes aye, and motion carries 5-0. Thank you. All right, now we have public comment, our first public comment.
Good evening. Hi, how are you?
Hold on a second, Bob. You're on mute.
Oh, good.
There we go.
Okay, now you can hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Bobby, I'm your tax collector. The tax office is open, but because of the virus, I can only let one person in at a time. The door is locked. There's a big note on it that says, "Please knock." When the person's finished, they go outside. The next person can come in. Because of that, I'm asking the residents if they could make out most of their check before they come to the office. They can put the date on it, they can pay who it's payable to, they can sign it. If they don't want to put the amount until they get there, that's fine, but the more they do at home, the faster the line goes outside. If they're entitled to the senior citizen discount on their trash, I ask that they put their date of birth on the lower left-hand corner. All this saves time for the people that are standing outside. Once the weather's nice, it's okay, but tomorrow's supposed to be really cold. Tuesday, I had 118 people come in person, so the line was pretty long outside. So the more they fill their check out at home, their register at home, it makes the line go that much faster. So I'm trying the best I can to get the lines moving and get the money in. We've had a good week so far, and I just feel bad that the people have to wait outside. But my office isn't big enough to have more than one person in there, and they have to have a mask on. Okay?
Thanks, Bobby.
I'm done.
Thanks, Bobby.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for the, thanks for the great job you're doing, and also we thank the residents for coming out and paying their taxes. It's a great thing. I know we had a great year last year. Everyone was very diligent and helped us out immensely. So thanks again to everyone. You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you for affording me the opportunity to speak here tonight. My name is Bob Greeney. I live on Mular Road in District 1 of Warminster. And my question is, as we're all aware, we had a pretty scary and upsetting incident earlier this week with the robbery and shooting at the Metro PCS over on County Line Road. And the first part of my question to you is, per each patrol, how many police officers do we have on?
That would be a question for our police chief?
Well, I have the answer. It's five officers per shift. Is that correct? Five minimum? Okay. So that leads me into the meat of my question here, which is, I know we just revisited the contract for the Warminster Police, and I have nothing but the utmost respect and admiration for our police officers. I don't think they get paid enough. But my question is, did we actually extend that previous contract, or did we restructure it, hopefully to allow us to hire more police to patrol our township? Because if you do the math, you know, God forbid we have one or two incidents at once at either end of the township, who is patrolling the streets? And I just hope that if we could get some more police officers to not spread the police officer so thin, and with the, you know, uptick in crime that's been going on, keep the township, you know, the residents of the township confident in their safety.
Well, thanks for your comment, and we have the utmost respect and think that our police do a fine job. And our police chief handles the workforce and the workload very well, and we leave that to his discretion.
Okay, so in regards to the contract, was it, you know, restructured, or was it just an extension? Are we going to be able to get more police officers?
We're not going to, we're not going to discuss, we're still in negotiations with the contract, and we're not at liberties to discuss that contract right now.
That's fair enough. Fair enough. I just, you know, hope that we're not wearing them too thin because they do a tremendous job for us.
Yes, and we agree.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
That's all the public comment, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. All right. So now we move to the consent agenda. Oh, wait.
He does have another comment. He thought somebody was waiting, so he was going to go back out.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, so my second public comment. At the last Board of Supervisors meeting, it was mentioned that the total cost of milling and paving for the township would be $4.2 million. And the press release today mentioned a cost of $3.7 million. So can I assume that the $500,000 difference is what the WMA will be contributing towards this project?
I'm sorry, you were breaking up. I didn't quite hear the rest of that.
All right, so it was stated that $4.2 million in the press release today.
Really? I wish billion. The difference is, the difference is engineering and other related costs that are capitalized as part of the project.
So is that what the WMA, is that their portion that they're kicking in?
No.
Okay, all right. And it was also mentioned in the last meeting that roads listed in Alt 1 and Alt 2 groups are those that were splitting the cost with the WMA. Is that true?
Alternate, alternate 1 and 2.
Yes, that's.
Is 50 with the WMA, they're paying for one lane, we're paying for the other lane.
All right, and then in the 10 sections of the roads listed in Alt 1 and Alt 2, four of these sections are state roads. I just was wondering, are we paying for them? And if we are, why are we paying for the state roads to be paved?
That's news to me.
News to me as well.
All right, well, you can check into it if it's, if that's not the truth, I mean, if that's not happening.
We wouldn't be paving state roads.
Okay, well, you know.
That would be, that would be between PennDOT and municipal authority.
Yeah, that was, that's, authority has to pay for repair wherever they run utilities, no matter if it's township or public. I'll check on the scope for those roads. That was brought to my attention. That's up to, the authority still has to pay for repairing where they ran the utilities, even if it is a state highway, they're still have to do the repair per PennDOT standards.
Okay.
That may be just the trench restoration.
All right, and then just the last section of this question for me is, I was under the impression that we have an agreement with both Warrington and Upper Southampton, with Warrington regarding Valley Road, and Upper Southampton with portions of Davisville Road of splitting that road clearing. Do we have such an agreement? And if we don't, I believe we used to. Did that stop?
We haven't made any changes to any agreements with regard to Valley or Davisville Road.
So, you know, was that a yes, or? I'm not sure your answer there, so I apologize.
My answer was, we have not changed or entered into any new agreements with regard to Davisville or Valley Road.
All right.
Whatever agreements we had, whatever agreements were existing before we took over this board are still in place.
All right, well, I thank you very much for the time tonight, and thank you for letting me be here.
You're quite welcome. Thank you.
There's no public comment now, Mr. Chair.
Craig, if we, if we can find somebody else to contribute to the milling and paving program, please do so. So check that, check that out tomorrow.
Yep, I got it.
Thanks, Craig. I think I asked you about that last week, Craig, so let me know when you come up with it.
Okay, no other public comment? All right, let's move on to the consent agenda. We have the Consider Approval of the Board of Supervisors Minutes dated February 4th, 2021. I'm assuming everyone read that. Consider Cobblestone Estates Formerly Leary Redevelopment, Release Number 2 from the escrow account, the amount of $512,984.38, excuse me. And then Consider Toll Oaks, Release Number 2 from the escrow account, the amount of And then Consider Approval of the Conditional Use Decision in Order for 435 York Road. Is there a motion?
Motion, Mr. Chair.
I'll second, Chair. Okay. Any questions or comments on the consent agenda?
There is a public comment in the room, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Janice Charlton, 500 Lemon Street, Warminster, Pennsylvania. How are you this evening?
Oh, thank you.
Good. I have some questions regarding the, where'd I go here? 435 York Road. It's the proposed location for the medical marijuana dispensary. Well, I believe it's a benefit to our community for those people that are needing medical assistance. I have some questions in the event that it should become legal, because I believe that's probably going to happen in the next few years. Have we done the, since you're putting it right next to a neighborhood, especially on a busy corner that has a lot of traffic, and a lot of children live in that neighborhood and Speedway? I was just wondering if we could consider placing it in a area not directly affecting a neighborhood in the industrial areas maybe, or commercial area? Have we done our research to look to see other community areas around us that already have medical marijuana dispensaries? Have there had an increase in crime? Have they had any increase in traffic area around there of negative consequences? What happens when marijuana becomes legal and anybody can just go there? How does that affect our community, the value of our homes? Even in Las Vegas, where it is legal to have marijuana, they have it off the main strip so that it's not something that's distracting to the rest of the community and lessens the value of the appeal as people drive down our main streets? Have we given all those things into consideration?
Yes, we have, and you're a little late for your comments because this was, this was on the agenda last month and already voted on and approved. So first off, it's highly secure, if you watch the last meeting. Secondly, we can't make assumptions about legalizing marijuana. Right now, it's not legal, so you're making an assumption that you don't know whether it will come true or not. And, yeah, we've, you know, this was, this was looked into, and the surrounding types of businesses like this, they have 130 in the state, or was it nationwide? I think they have 11 in the state.
Nationwide.
Very secure, very little crime, and they have no incidents. So, yeah, we had, we had looked at this already.
Okay.
I'd like to point out, too, Ken, that it's medical marijuana. Anybody that goes there has to have a prescription, just, even if marijuana became, even if recreational marijuana became legal, that doesn't say that that place is going to be selling recreational marijuana.
That's my question. I know it's fine that you have it there. I was just curious if we'd done the homework. And my concern is just that, is, you know, I don't know the future either, but in the event that it becomes legal, will that, do we have in the clause of that contract that it has to maintain medical marijuana?
Their permit is for medical marijuana.
Yeah, their license is for medical marijuana only. Who knows, who knows what the future will bring?
Okay.
But that's what their license is for.
I just know in 2009, there was a possibility of the discovery house caused quite controversy in Warminster, having a methadone clinic in our community. So since a lot of people aren't able to come in-person meetings, I wasn't sure, you know, how the community would feel once they found out, you know, how they felt about this. So that's why I wanted to ask these questions.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have any idea when we'll have in-person meetings?
Well, that would be up to the governor, and as soon as we feel it's safe in that building, because obviously the room's very small. And for us to be up on the, around that boardroom table together, we're not six feet apart. So, no, I don't have that. That would be entirely up to the state.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other comments? No? Okay. So if you have more comments, we'll call the vote. Do this by roll call or by just voting? Anyone have a preference?
Can we do a roll call on this one, Mr. Chairman, please?
Hold on, everybody's, there's a lot of circles going on here. Did you say roll call, Mark? Can we, please? I appreciate it. Sure, okay. So Kathy?
Aye.
Mark?
I'm an aye with the exception of item D.
Okay, I don't know, can you do that?
Well, you'd have to pull it out and vote on it separately. Throw it on the consent agenda without that, and then vote on G.
Do we pull item D?
I mean, the board can do whatever it wants, sure. Absolutely.
Okay, that's fine. Yeah, I, okay. Mary?
Aye.
Judy?
Aye.
And chair votes aye, so the motion carries, I guess, 5-0 with the exception of item D, that's 4-1, right?
Cool.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. You're welcome. All right, moving along. Finance report. I'll turn that over to Mary.
Okay. So for this evening, we have the bill list dated February 18th, 2021, in the amount of $922,054.40, and a supplemental bill, list dated February 26th, 2021, in the amount of $1,373,946.90, a total of $22,296,001.30.
Okay, motion to accept the financial report?
Motion. Second.
Second?
Second.
Judy, second? Okay, any questions or comments?
Just a.
Um, just a quick comment, Mr. Chairman, I know I discussed this with you offline. I just noticed when I'm in signing some checks that we're paying two months' worth of bills, are we getting caught up with the new finance director, or is it because of the meeting night change? You know what I'm saying? I'm just not sure why this is occurring. Randy, I want you to get paid, buddy.
Yeah, we want everyone. I feel your concern, and I thank you, Supervisor McKeon.
The new finance director, I know I discussed this with you offline, but.
Yeah, we're, I'm looking into that, I think it's a combination of everything, everyone getting up to speed, you know, we all, obviously, we had we had some huge issues with our, you know, getting our audit squared away and reconciliation and everything, and you know, but I expect that to actually change now, where we'll be, it'll be monthly again.
I was a little more concerned with Randy than Mr. Kennard, I think Mr. Kennard's doing quite well.
Well, you, now you know where you stand again.
Right.
No comment. That's okay, I had peanut butter and jelly for dinner, it was fine, it was delicious.
Exactly, Randy, that's.
Skippy, I like Skippy.
Yeah, thank you. All right, any other, any other comments? Any from the public? All right, well, let's call a question, Kathy?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Judy?
Aye.
And chair votes aye, motion carries five oh, thank you. Yeah, we'll get the, you know, I'll tell you what, I'm hearing some great things with our financial manager, and I'm sure we'll things are really running much smoother than they have been in the past, and I think it'll just continue to get better. Okay, I don't believe there's any unfinished business, we'll move right along to new business. We're going to consider the appointment of a member to the planning commission for term. Are there any motions for nominate or appointments?
I'd like to nominate Jamie Jolly for the planning commission.
Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Okay, any questions or comments?
I just have a comment, Mr. Chairman, I'm where I totally fine with moving someone up from alternate to voting member, it's the right course of action. I would just like to see these openings advertised. You know, I looked on the website, everything, I mean, we're going to appoint an alternate, obviously, to take his place there, and there's it's, I'd like to see these things advertised to the general public, in case there's interest.
Yeah, we brought that up before several meetings, that I think when we, when Nora Finella was appointed to zoning, we said that there was an opening, and actually, we were we made sure everyone knew about that, and because we didn't appoint anyone's planning at that time, that's why we're doing it now. I, I mean, was it on the website? I'm imagining it was, I don't know.
I, I didn't see it.
Oh, no? Okay.
We're breaking up. Okay. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, anyone, everyone's, I'm getting a lot of
Yes.
A lot of circles here, so.
Same here.
So, just bear with us, please. Is there any from the public? No, okay, so, let's call a question. Kathy?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Judy? You're muted, Judy, but it sounded like an aye, or looked like an aye. And the chair votes aye, the motion carries five oh. Okay, so, we'll hold off on the alternate, I guess. I mean, we did have someone that had applied previous, but if you feel we want to hold off, I'm okay with that, Mark.
Totally up to you, Mr. Chairman, I just, I'm just pointing out for the future, there's boards, openings, and I'd really like to see them advertised a little more broadly to the public if possible.
And I don't disagree with that. You know, like I said, this, some, they normally are, and I just assumed it was, I didn't go out on the website.
But if you're prepared to take action on this, I'm perfectly fine with it.
Okay. So, yeah, do we have a, so now we have to fill an alternate position on the planning commission, so is there a motion to appoint?
I'd like to nominate Amy Sanchez. As alternate.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, is there any questions or comments? Any questions from the public? No? All right, we'll call a question, Kathy?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Judy?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, that motion carries five oh as well, thank you. All right, now, we have a consideration to remove someone from the library board, you all had read the letter. Let me get, let me find this. So, the letter was from Tracy Reed, and this would be a motion to remove Pat McGlynn from the library board for failure to attend meetings for quite some time, is there a motion? You're on mute, Kathy.
Mr. Chair, motion?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, any questions or comments? Any from the public? Okay, being done, let's call a question, Kathy?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Judy?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, and for the record, there's an opening on the library board. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, so we'll make sure that we'll make sure that all the positions are advertised, or we'll get them back up there, I thought they were there. Thank you. Okay. You're quite welcome. So, let's move to the professional reports, we'll start with the township manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had a free construction meeting with James D. Marcy Incorporated this morning, and I'm pleased to report that we should be seeing asphalt late as early as next month. We have a few things to work out. We want to give we want to give residency opportunity if they want to replace their curbs or apron, driveway apron, before the paving, that they have an opportunity to do so. Towards that, we're putting out a an announcement along with the specification for the work. And the permit application, so that'll be on the website and and other other places, such as Facebook. But we're we're good to go with the Milligan paving program next month. The next thing, I've received a draft of the 2020 expenditures and revenues. We're far ahead of last year. I think there's a few adjustments that need to be done before it can be handed over to the auditors for for their work, but we're far ahead we're far ahead of last year. One of the things that is holding us up somewhat is closing out the 2020 escrows. That they, to my knowledge, they haven't been fully reconciled yet. And I'm taking a more cautious approach to the escrow releases, I'm I'm requiring that they be reconciled and we assure that the township has funds available, they're not in the red, for example, when we're releasing money to a developer. But we're quickly getting to the conclusion of the reconciliation of the 2020 escrows. And hopefully, someday we'll get caught up, but it's been a long not only did you have the entire 2020, but you had we just got 2019 done about 30, 45 days ago. So, that's the preliminary numbers, I'll tell you, they're looking good. And that's primarily because we had the the fund, the funding from the or Mr. Municipal Authority, the down payment on the sale of stormwater system, that saved us. My review of the financial records, unfortunately, it didn't look like there was any cost cutting done in response to the reduction of five mils in the adopted budget. And, you know, that's unfortunate because we're looking at closing a 1.9 million structural deficit now. And we're going to have to make some we're going to have to make some tough cuts this year in order to get that closed before January 1. So, we're going to be sitting down with with Afsmi in the next two weeks and talk about and talk about our financial problems and the potential solutions. Okay, and I think that I think that is the extent of my report for the season.
Okay, can I ask a question?
Sure.
With the sale of stormwater system, have we been paid yet, or is that deal been consummated yet?
We received 1.7 million last year, and we're due 4.3 million this year.
And have they assumed stormwater management? I mean, I, so anyone that has a stormwater issue is to call the authority, not the township.
The we have, well, I guess we're waiting on our, on our money. We haven't quite gotten through the through that process yet, but we'll work out the announcement with the authority and and getting, getting those things turned over to them.
Yeah, that's why I was asking, because I know we really didn't do any stormwater work last year, and here we are, heading into storm season again, and just want to know who's doing stormwater management? And I assume it's that.
We had, we had we had, a couple issues came up, and I know that we had cleaned some inlets in the spirit of cooperation, but obviously, that'll be coming to an end very soon.
So, thanks for the update.
I'll talk to Tim. I'll talk to Tim in the near future about that transition.
It's not going to be much longer, Mark.
Thank you.
Okay. And I see we're about 395 days ahead of schedule compared to the last reconciliation and audit, that's a good thing. So, and I did, I did note that there were a lot of things done last year as far as the escrow accounts and the way the finances were managed that really were concerning to us and you know, which is why we made the changes we made, so that's all, that's all I have to comment about. Okay.
I just wanted to say, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to thank Bill for the report and all the incentives that we are taking as a board and with you at the helm as our township manager. I'm sure our residents are glad to know that we are staying, we are trying to get on equal footing with our financial obligations, and we are taking it one step at a time, I want to thank you for those incentives.
Oh, I did forget one thing, I just received it today. We have a we have a video of the construction at the Warminster Community Park and some pictures. We had gentlemen involved here to to do drone footage. And it's, it's, it's pretty good, and we'll try to get it out, I intend to get it out to the board first, and then we'll get it out publicly for residents to be able to take a look at.
Right.
And it's, it's very interesting to watch.
Yeah, and it's nice to see that that 50-year fence come down on Bristol Road and the new, the new post and rail going up, it looks nice.
Yes.
So, you know, I understand that everything's going well over there, we see Craig, we see your reports, and from what I hear, everyone's telling me that Miko's doing a fantastic job over there, so I'm looking forward to see it completed and have our residents have an even more enhanced enjoyment of the park, that's great.
Yeah, you and Bill stole my thunder, my big note was the fence is down along Bristol Road. Aaron wanted me to make sure I said that, the fence is down, so I'll cross that off my list.
Mr. Chairman, I yield my time to the engineer.
The drone footage will confirm this.
It's twice between Mark and myself, we stole your thunder twice, huh? All right. Mr. Flagger?
Mr. Chairman, members. We've submitted our report, unless you have questions, I don't think further to add, we're handling all the, handling all the legal issues the township has. And some of which were discussed at executive session today, and Scott and I'd be happy to answer any questions, thank you.
So, this is, this is the result of the slow pay for Flagger and so, it's
That's right.
We're not getting, we're not getting a report.
We submitted a written report, we're just not going to, we're not going to repeat it, that's all.
The, we're trying, we're trying a new policy where we speed up our revenues and slow down our expenditures. Especially until Bobby comes, comes in shortly with the motherhood of revenue for us.
That's right. The old, the old delay tactic.
All right, well, thank you, thank you, Randy, and then Craig? How about you?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will add a little bit onto what Mr. McCauley mentioned about the road program and pre-con today. I know I've been asked, and my staff's been asked, the schedule, which roads are going to be paved, what time? They're willing to work with us, the township, so they're not, they don't have a set schedule yet of which roads we pave first, which developments. We're going to work that out with them with the township, and they said they can accommodate our schedule, so we should have that in the next few weeks. Following up on that public comment, I did get some feedback here. I can multitask on the texting and listening to the meeting here. The roads that are state roads are County Line Road, Bristol Road, and Murns Road as part of the road program. That's all related to WMA projects, so require for all permitting, scope and all that. We're going to look at what PENDO is requiring, what the WMA is responsible for, and then I'll report back to Mr. McCauley on what he has to discuss with Mr. Hagie as far as they're reimbursed, so. I was asked before about permitting, obviously, you guys are allowed to do work in its state roads, so is the WMA, provided you get permits, but we're not doing any work ourselves. They had to include those projects as part of the road program to piggyback onto the contractor, so that's why it was done that way, and we bit it out as alternate one and two, so we still have flexibility with that and to adjust the scope. So we still have flexibility with that and to adjust the scope. Oh, the actual length length of the contract, length of the paving is a big question I've been asked as well. It's a 90-day contract for substantial completion and 105 days for final, so they'll be out there. Hopefully, it won't take as long, but it's about a three three-month paving schedule that that we'll have. That's another big question I get asked. Related to the park project, like I said, the fence is down. The other big item is they're starting to work on the pavilion foundation, and we're working on utility coordination with Miko and the WMA later in the future. If we do a splash pad out there, that was requested by the township to coordinate all that. So we've been doing that, and the snow slowed down some some of the work the past month, but the pavilion foundation and utility coordination for future splash pad, if that, you know, is approved later on in the future phase. That's what started up this week. I got some good news. Weiss Market's pre-con meeting, pre-construction meeting is being scheduled. So Weiss Market is moving forward.
All right.
Sure?
And also
There's an awful lot of awful lot of truckers are going to be disappointed. That'll be the end of the truck stop. Yeah.
Yes. That's been around for, what, approved three years ago?
Yeah.
And they needed and they needed a 90-day approval at the time as well.
Yes, I even think it was October 2018, and we had to go quick, so.
90 days.
Yeah, I'll never do that again.
No, no, thank you.
The other pre-construction meeting that we're having scheduling right now is for the Aldi grocery store. So Aldi is ready to go. I'm not sure about the bank and how that's going to work out as far as the the pre-con scheduling, but the Aldi representatives are ready to go for pre-construction, and I'll be starting up with hopefully within the next month.
So Craig, they're they're not coming back with another land development? They're going with the one we approved then, because I'd heard some some chatter about them coming back in with another land development application?
I think they changed their mind at the last second, so.
Yeah.
We have I believe record plans are in my office or will be in my office tomorrow. We're being dropped off, so.
Great, excellent.
And just real quick, a couple other projects. I know it gets out there pretty quickly when developers come in and have staff meetings, but the Pine Grove Cemetery is looking to sell off the back portion along County Line Road. It's the Pine Grove Cemetery. Toll Brothers is interested. We have staff meeting to they're looking at trying to build about 47 single-family homes, completely buy-ride plan. They're aware of new zoning issues. It'll take a while to get in front of you, but they like to clean up their sketch plan. We'll probably review it, and then they'll probably come and present it to the staff and also to the board. But the cemetery has been looking for a while to sell the back portion of that property on County Line Road. You'll probably see a sketch plan for Franklin Corp. Center. That's lots one and four. If you recall, last year, Mr. Gebhardt was in for trying to do residential buildings. The board did not support that. He got the message, and he's coming in with a warehouse like many facilities that will be right next to the vertical screen proper building on Johnsville Boulevard. I think that'll be a pretty clean plan once you once you see that, but we're going to have a staff meeting on that as well. So it's pretty busy February. It's not, but I got to admit, as you saw with our bills, it was quite busy the last couple of months, so I'll open up any questions.
Ken, was that last year that they came in with that residential, or was that two years ago? I thought that was
Maybe it was.
It was 2019. Two years ago, Ken. Yeah, I thought so. Yeah. I don't remember seeing that last year, but I remember I was at that meeting.
I'm sorry, it was the prior board. You're right.
Right, right. Well, that's okay, so it's 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 in the right spot and it's
Yeah, I think it'll be a pretty clean plan.
Yeah, good.
Thank you for your report, Craig. All good news.
Checks in checks in the mail. Thank you.
Thank you, McCauley.
Yours and Randy's.
Well, it took a while for it to get there with the mail.
I guess I'm buying lunch next time.
All right, well, thanks. Thanks, Craig. Okay, so item 10, the Township Manager announcements, upcoming agenda items. So normally, this was basically whether we should hold a meeting, our second meeting of the month or not. Should we just leave it scheduled for now in case there's something that comes up? And then what do we have? There's a cancellation so many days before cancellation, I believe? Do you have to post it?
No, if you cancel it, it can be canceled that morning. You have up until that date to cancel anything.
Okay.
Right. We don't have we don't have anything pressing that I'm that I'm aware of right now, but I I think that's wise to to wait till we get closer to the date and make the call.
Okay, is there any objections to that?
No.
No.
Okay. Anything else for the upcoming agenda?
You're breaking up, Ken.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, not much I can do about that. So there's nothing else as far as upcoming agenda items? Okay. All right, round two of the public comment. No one? Okay, thank you very much. Supervisors' comments, I guess I'll start with you, Kathy.
I would like to thank fellow board members, our professional staff for a really productive meeting tonight. Also, would like to tell our residents, you know, we are getting more of the vaccines in the in the Philadelphia suburbs now, so stay tight, you know, keep washing your hands, social distance, and and keep looking at your Bucks County website, any other websites that you can get on, because there will be more vaccine available in the next coming months. And that's all I have for for tonight. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a few. As we may know, today's National Son's Day. Want to give a shout out to my son, Jack. He's he's turned out to be a real gentleman and a real, really good man. He's never been a problem since the first day we brought him home, so shout out to my man. Tomorrow is my 28th wedding anniversary, and I wish my lovely wife Erica a happy anniversary. And I say it every year when I announce her anniversary, that her mother didn't think we'd make 28 days. 20 28 years, and I always say to her mother, look at her now, she's the first lady of Warmminster. Look at her now. I want to give her a shout out, a happy anniversary to Erica. And lastly, I just want to wish everybody a Happy St. Patty's Day. And as my father used to say, don't overtrain, and if if you do, please take an Uber. Chief Donnelly does not want any overnight guests, so please, please enjoy, but please be safe. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Congratulations. Congratulations, Mark, on your anniversary.
She's earned her place in heaven, Kathy, I sure. I I always say, I didn't grow up till I was 40. She says 45, so.
Right.
We have a little dispute there, but yeah, thank you. Thank you.
That's that's all I have. Thanks, Mr. Chairman. My house. So, all right, well, congratulations and good point on St. Patty's Day. Very good point. All right, how about you, Mary?
Happy anniversary to Mark and Erica. The weather looks like it's going to be breaking. We're finally going to see an absence of snow in this next coming week, so it'll be going to be nice. Exactly. So again, as Kathy said, you know, the vaccine hopefully will be coming to us shortly. You know, when you're out there, you know, socializing in the outside, please do not forget to wear your mask and practice that six feet social distancing. You know, we're kind of seeing these numbers start to slide down in cases, and we would like to keep it that way and for everybody's safety. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Judy?
Oh, I'd just like to say thank you for this very
Judy?
Did she fall over?
It's what it looks like, Judy.
You all right?
I think it fell over.
Wow.
Yeah, I'd like to thank you for a very good meeting, and that was fun.
It's like a trap door.
I saw that cat that was in the background going, "Why, got you."
Did he leave? Yeah, he laughed. She laughed. She got upset. Scared the cat. So I just want to thank you for everything, and it was a good meeting, a productive meeting, and I want people to stay safe. I feel a lot more comfortable now with people since I got my first shot last week.
Right.
And waiting for the three more weeks for the second one, so please, everybody, get your vaccine, don't be afraid to vaccine, and don't forget the other pandemic that we have of opioid addiction, and remember to report anything that you see. Have a nice St. Patty's Day and a nice March, and March is Women's History Month, so let's not forget all the women that have gotten you where you are today.
All right, thank you, Judy. So there's still a debate in my household as to when I grew up. That's on But and I'm sure I'm sure I'll lose that that date is already etched in stone. But anyway, yeah, as everyone said, be safe, Happy St. Patty's Day. To Mark's point, if you do overtrain, make sure you take an Uber or have someone pick you up. And, you know, I do want to thank the board as well, all the board members. We've had some, you know, we've had our debates and what we've moved forward and and, you know, things that happened in the past happened, and, you know, it took a long time to get where we are, but we're starting to see a light at the end of the tunnel here. You know, Rome wasn't built in a day. Things don't happen. It takes years and years, and it takes time to to straighten out, get on the right course with the with the with the giant ship. So I do I do see a light at the end of the tunnel. It's pretty far away, but I do see it, and I just want to thank the board for for everything and all our staff as well for for all the help they've done. And and that's it. Everyone be safe, mask up, and motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, great. Thanks very much, everyone.
Thank you all.
Bye.